Good.
Good, so maybe um you're in college, you're in Florida. We are in Florida. Um so good afternoon everyone, thank you for being here for our policy meeting. Um we have an overview of our agenda. We're just gonna kind of go analyze our framework, policy framework, and see if everyone agrees to this, or we can finalize it, have it approved for this meeting. Um submit that to the president, um so we can have a final framework. And then last time we spoke, we were just picking out, uh we were supposed to pick out five policies that we each thought that we should prioritize from the list that we've gotten from the policy committee of P D S D. Uh so we're just gonna talk about that today as well, to see what five policies we as school board members are going to focus on um going forward. Um so, do we have a motion to approve yet? Alrighty, do you want to approve the minutes from four to twenty-five? Oh, sorry. Um alrighty, and now we're just gonna go on to our policy framework. Um would you guys have a chance to review it? Would you ever comment something you wanted to change?
I think, no, I did review it a few times, so if you could just walk through it a bit, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, so this was actually President Stevens. He um created one, and I looked it over, um messed with it a little bit, and then I left it in his doc. So, the first point is student outcome focused policy oversight. It just talks a little bit about where a policy is, um our authority and oversight. So I'll just read those, because that's important. So it says, "We retain the authority to review and oversee the direction of all policies district-wide. Pull out any standing policy for review, revision, and recommendation to the whole school board. Um ensure that all board committees remain informed on policy review timelines, address urgent policy matters due to discretion of the policy chair, and ensure that all policy decisions align with improving student outcomes in education. So, do you guys think we should add change?
Uh can I ask President Stevens? I um from the first time, I haven't reviewed it since you sent it out, right? Were there any, or maybe um tell me, um tell me, is anything notable that was like changed? Because I regret, like, when we were doing it the first time, I think I had given my feedback, but I don't know if there was anything that's changed.
Yeah, so there was only this part. So, also it says that pulling out standing policy review uh for revision and for the whole board to review. Um so we just put that, it's not as pat, like added, you know, it's not as practice, uh but we do it, we think it's necessary. Um so that we were not just pulling out every policy to be brought to your school, the whole school board. Um so it's only as a board, do you think that's necessary? That the whole school board should be weighing in on this conversation? That was really, the rest of it was pretty, that's what we have been saying. Yeah. Alrighty, and then of course, the same thing. It's like um all food policies, this is, this is here to school board policy and school board governance and operations. Uh so we have the policy oversight and responsibilities. So each committee is responsible for implementing policies within their domain. So although we oversee the overall, but implementation, like how the others can be, city committee, they're responsible for implementing that. Um we oversee it, and we will review whether that information, implementation has been going on. Um so we have like every, we have a, the review cycle, like annually, every two years and every five years, but they will be going to actually implement it. So the policy committee has the authority to overturn, update, and create policies during development process, ensuring alignment with district goals, which is pretty standard. Private school board will approve the final revisions and the policies after the policy committee's review. That's good issue, which is also standard. Um district staff will work with the board during policy development phases to ensure policies are well-formed, practical for implementation, and policy decisions are prioritized during achievement, equitable access to opportunities, and long-term educational access. Um and then, we have a governance and administration policy. So district administration policies and private school board governance policies are established by board leadership and policy chair. Um and these policies will be sent to the policy committee to review, and recommend, and recommendations will be brought before the full board. Collaboration and strategic planning. So the policy committee will collaborate with the full school board and superintendent on board philosophy goals and strategic planning during board retreats, policy development and revisions, ensuring alignment with district-wide objectives, um the structured two-beating process of um any policy directed regulations that are being proposed, um sharing that all committees review their policies annually. So with us reviewing, making sure that committees are also reviewing their progress, um and promoting policies that directly support student academic achievement, social motion development, and creative development. And then again, the policy review cycle. So annually, we'll look at policies related to budgeting, student discipline, health and safety, and legal compliance. Every three years, um we are suggesting curriculum standards, instructional policies, and personal policies. And every five years, general governing policy that do not frequently require updates. So that would be the longest one. Do you guys have any comments on these?
Can I share a little quick? So I, I think one of the things that I wanted to do was so, um I spoken with the Council of Great City Schools. AJ is going to actually provide a training on best practices of best use of committees. So, one of the things that I wanted to do was sort of give him, well not really him, but it's clear voice description, but have something to sort of start off with, you know? Then get feedback from the Council of Great City Schools, or we take the feedback from the training, and then finalize it. So this is like something that I wanted the committees to begin with, view, sort of discuss, have a conversation about. So there's a framework, and it's going to be, like, you know, when we're all along going, does that need some process in place? But this is sort of to get started with, can be tweaked and stuff. But when we have the professional development training, around that time is when I want to be able to sort of allow the committees to sort of approve the policies, implement what they want to implement, and you know, take feedback from the council. But this is something to, you know, get us started on having those conversations, because we're already going behind.
Yeah, 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 definitely. Um so, do you think this is a good enough starting point for them to use?
Absolutely, but I'm leaving it to the committees to establish, oh, uh you know, I'm running, you know, and actually conduct from the word. So whatever the committee feels comfortable with, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That was a question. Yeah, I don't have the documents you have in front of you, but um I know that in our website, we have different categories for different policies. And I'm wondering if all the categories have been represented there? In the frequency of how often may I um review? Um just because I, I didn't hear anything regarding like facilities, um operational, um. And so I just want to make sure. Sorry, I don't have the computer, sorry.
Yeah, development.
Just so that we don't miss any categories?
No, absolutely, absolutely. I think also, you know, before it's actually finalized, I want to make sure that it goes through, you know, legal. And legal is able to sort of look at it as well, to make sure that, you know, everything is aligned with district policies and anything with, you know, the state. Because I know like the state definitely requires that there be a health and wellness committee. Um so, you know, that's something I want to make sure applies.
Yeah, so I tried to look at the review timeline for what's already in the roadmap when I was looking at like the policy review, it said, it's a policy, um policy review. Um and it said every three years. And so, that's what I was kind of going off on. Um so that's right, the three, the five, the five years is because it was like, oh. Like I have, one of the ones that I've recommended is our bylaws. But I know our bylaws is something that we probably won't change for another five years, but I would recommend it because we have even hybrid board. Our bylaws don't say anything about the hybrid board. It just says, talks about the appointee.
I actually can't even talk about the bylaws too, but we're not paying that. Yes, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that's good. Um so, that's, that was pretty much the end. Like those were the good parts, were like the policy review timeline and everything. If it sounds good for you guys, um or do you, I don't know if you guys wanted to, like considering, see the document before we're like okaying it, so maybe do you have to send the final draft?
You actually don't, so it's fine. You, I think you guys should, you know, guys, you all should probably take um some time to review it. Um I'll have the documents, but I wanted to see really what the chair sort of revised first anyway. But I think you know, people can come that live, and since I have this meeting next month, I think this is the last meeting. But unless you all want to, but I think that I just really wanted the chairs to sort of, you know, take a peek at those frameworks.
Okay.
Um and then get some advice from the committee, so you know, who all can sort of work through that, even if it's like an initial document to share with them, or have some conversations around it. And then I will encourage, you know, we will be having a new um policy person. Um I hope that policy person in Scott will be able to work together with you to make sure legally we're sort of in compliance with the framework, but also in coordination with the uh, what an issue with the Council of Great City Schools, you know, the professional development training. Thank you.
And when does it start, Chris, after?
She starts on Monday.
Awesome.
There's a lot of law.
So, I'll give you guys some time to look it over, because we have a few comments on there right now.
So where, where Jen would prefer to, under obviously review cycles, see where you have every three years, where you have policies, uh categories. You might want to take a look at the categories, and uh just use those.
Yeah, you see my little note on the side.
That's why, I think that's where you.
Yeah, and I also just wanna think about how many policies we currently have in those annual categories. Thinking about budgeting, student discipline, health and safety, legal compliance. Courses are so important, but when you look at the number of policies, I also want to think of the, like realistically, is that something we can do annually with all of them? So like really thinking about what can we prioritize annually that must, must be done? And I, I know that we, we haven't done a great job as a district doing this already. And it's every three years, uh so just want to be realistic too.
Yeah.
A good thing I want to look at when you guys are looking at this, and I'm not sure, I'm assuming it came to the board, but when you look at each of those categories, and look at the policies underneath them, it makes it, it makes it very difficult to work your policies. For example, if somebody decided that certain policies should be under students, but it's not into it, right? So, as you guys are thinking about this, I wish you would also take home to think about like, what's the best way to, what is the best way to present our policies in a way that's accessible to public? Because in terms of, I know I'll be looking for something, I can't look for it on type. So I just look under the categories, and I have a guess, and it's probably, some of them are obvious. Like it says student, something you don't have, those are kind of obvious, but it's not always that easy. So maybe you guys can think about, like, what's another way to organize, like, so, so.
And I don't know if it's, if it's something that, you know, the board probably can do, which is sort of recommend specific policies to just be overseen by the administration, and then, you know, sort of just bring it before the committee, you know, for like, you know, final approval, recommendation. Um not all, but I'm just saying like, you know, if it's specific policies that really needs to be viewed from an educator lens, then, you know, maybe that's something, that's a struggle with the committee, something that could be looked at.
Yeah, I definitely go that way. When I, when I was preparing for our first policy meeting, I was trying to find where the policies were located. And I was even trying to find where the policies were, and then what, what is what? It was so difficult, and I was like, I can't imagine a regular parent who doesn't, might not even want to use technology, trying to figure out what is like the school board's policy? Trying to find it. So I was like, definitely figuring out ways how we can make that more accessible to parents, and even students. Because there was a, there's a lot of student, the student rights, student quota limits in there. Um so making sure that it's accessible for them to be able to find it and use it.
I was hoping the activity from Council of Great City Schools to actually purge some of the policies that I, I did. Did you see, I hope you probably haven't reviewed all the policies. But did you see like any policies that you're like, is there a need for this?
Yeah, so.
And maybe that's something, you know, that can be discussed with superintendent office, like, you know, is there a need for this, you know?
I was, I was quickly looking through some of them again before, um of course, we have this document that was shared to us um by the policy, the P D S D policy committee that they have, um where they have listed policies that they believe are high priority, low priority, moderate priority. So they've already started doing this work. Um and we're just, the way that I see it, we're just assisting where we can, because we're not educational experts, um as you guys are, and nor do we have the time to review all of these, um like you may have. So, um there's a lot on here. There's a lot.
But and also remember, you know, policies are like insurance. You never need insurance until you do it. So the only caution I would have is, I'm not part of the Great City Schools, I can't do the same, but maybe looking at what policies could be combined. Maybe there's some that could be combined, but I don't know, I'm always, I just like policy because, you know, some, all kinds of weird things happen. If you have something already there, then it will make your life a lot easier. So there's that, I, I'm assuming, I could be wrong, because I don't, you know, I didn't know up there, and I wasn't here as a kid, but I've seen that some of those older policies, there's something happening.
Yeah.
So the question is, the question is, are they, you've done a good hit? Is there something, is there something that could collapse into mine? Um and then maybe there are some that don't, you know, I haven't looked, I haven't looked at it, but I'm.
Yeah, we have a bunch, a couple, not a bunch, but we have like about five of them, looking at from like two thousand and two. It's in building accommodations, and then we also like building grounds and property maintenance. And then we have like uh something else that's like um special use of buildings. These all could kind of be a one policy. Um so definitely like figuring that, figuring that way.
This, this may also seem like a silly thing to say, but I myself have sometimes struggled when I talk to my supervisor, should this be a policy? Or should this be like a standard operating procedure that I just treat guys as for? And I think sometimes I find it confusing to know, like, what should be policy? And so, I don't know, that's just a question I ask. Like we can, we have a lot of standard operating procedures that we have in the district that aren't policy. And so, but what is worth having a policy around?
Yeah.
Not to add more, but I just want to say.
That's like another way of thinking.
Yeah. So I guess with this, for the framework section, um we will, we'll keep working on it. Uh you guys can email me if there's anything you want to, I'll put it in a Google Doc, and I'll share it with you guys, so that way you guys can make the real time edits. Um and then we'll finalize it whenever it needs to be finalized, so we can submit it to the Council of Great City Schools.
Can I actually just ask a quick question? And I know I just would like read this a little bit more. Um is there anything about, like, I'm going through math, like always like, you know? Um but in terms of like community, like agency, when it comes to, yeah, I'm trying to form the question, but like, when it comes to, sometimes like Dr. when you say, things happen, and then the policy follows, right? And so, you don't want to always be in that situation, because that's super reactive. But I am thinking about like, is there something here that talks about like, when community is, like how do they advocate for policy? So that way it's not just top-down creation, but that there is this like, I mean, in bottom, like more holistic, like creation process. And so, for instance, if I'm a group of parents, you know what I mean? And like, we're identifying this like specific issue, and we're like, do you really think there needs to be a policy about X? Chop it, I don't know. Um like, what's that group's pathway to like advocate for a policy? And, yeah, I think that's what I feel like there should be a pathway for people to like submit policy. Um and pol, and not just like suggestion box kind of stuff, but like a template. Yeah, a template or a pro, or a policy proposal process, maybe to something totally separate. But I feel like it should link to here at some point, of like, how can people advocate for a policy in a way that's accountable? And that also asks them to do a little bit of research, and give some like case studies or proof, or have some sign-ons of other people who think it's important too. So that way it's not just like this top-down policy from the board and down, or from the district leadership and down. Um I feel like that's super annoying.
I don't think we talked about that last year, and I actually agree, like here with the meeting. And I was wondering at the time, will we create a link? But right now, on the website, we have a title nine, so if you want to file a complaint, a title nine complaint, or some kind of T V O complaint, it's there now. When people click on the main form, all of these other comes directly to my office, and then you file one. But if there was a way to have a form that did exactly what you just said, you know? Like, what are you advocating for, why do you think this is necessary, what research have you done?
Yeah.
Ask all those questions, and then when they submit it, it goes to the committee, right? And then, they get maybe an invitation to come to one of these meetings, right? To kind of have a discussion about why it's important, blah, 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 blah. And then, it might be, by the way, that when they come to the meeting, there's already a policy for them.
Right, right.
Um maybe there's a way to say, hey, we have a policy, can I take a look at this policy? If you still think that this doesn't do it, please, something like that. The, the, the link would be accessible on the website, anybody could access it twenty-four seven, right? And then, then my idea, I was off, and it could get close, right?
Yeah.
That's just my.
Yeah, I love, I love that idea, because I think that policy is where like change happens. It's where, it's where it happens, and so, it's even, even, you know, just thinking about what are the policies we think? I'm like, I don't know, I, I feel like I need to tap in with my community to know what I think. We, you guys have senses based on who perches to say, but I do think that's important for it to come from folks. And then that really drives like what we're doing, um like urgently, because it's coming from people. And I, and I agree, I think it's a leadership development, to be organized, an opportunity, to be like, you know, if I just want blue milk, right? Or whatever, do you know what I mean? And like, I'm the only person who feels that way, and I've done no research. It's not, you know what I mean? Like, but like, if it's something that, it's like, no, I actually got like fifty signatures of other parents who feel this way. Do you know what I mean? And we've done the research, and here's the case study, and here's the proposal. Um that's an incredible leadership development opportunity too, you know? And I think a really great way for the, for us to be getting policy that matters.
Um I think exactly what you're talking about, so I think one of the points I was gonna recommend for us to review is the school board policy review policy. And that's, that's, that's in there. It talks about like how do we review policy? And part of that is like how those community, uh it looks like you guys were working on it, goes to template last year. Yeah, it says last time it was your bylaws was from twenty twenty twenty-four. So, and it, I was looking at, they have some different information, like definition, and exactly what you're saying of like, you want to recommend a policy, you can have a policy analysis with it, and talk about like how this affects the community, how is it legal-wise? How, do we already have a policy? Um so, let's see, you guys already started.
I'm ready to, yeah.
I don't know where it went.
It's, it's.
I'll make a connection. No, it's not done. But I was like, it's on for high, um high priority, and I was like, we should finish it. Like, it's basically done, yeah. So, that should be one of the easiest ones for us to get, to get out of the way. Uh but yeah, no. And I think also adding something in our framework, specifically that community could be powering. Um so, I'll, I'll handle that.
I think the doctor made his point, because when I'm over, I'm always looking at district policy. It's just not accessible, uh people don't know how to get to it. And if that can be a bit updated, and reflect, you know, specific resolutions that's passed, and I don't do resolutions, but to the point of, you know, maybe there is a document that people can fill out, and you know, there's a process of how to submit, that'd be good as well, if you didn't have to just plug it in.
Yeah.
In the same game of accessibility, like the language can be confusing to, right? Like, it's confusing to me, like, so even if there's like maybe more graphics, or like some other way to make the policy accessible, like whether language, you know? Yeah, graphics, I would go graphics.
You can spread a carousel.
Style, so, yeah. Alrighty, so we will, on point four of our agenda, we finished talking about it. Um so now, we're at point five, so review of the policy audit spreadsheet. Um do you guys have any comments or anything? Are we going to talk about like urgency, alignment, or strategic goals, kind of like this? I know we have some questions about, um like how, what is the hiding in the world there? Do you guys want to, like, a little bit more time to look at this? Before we have that conversation, I don't know if there's, we're gonna review it, and we have any comments?
I'd really like to look at the community partner policy. Not necessarily follow what the policy says, but talking to a lot of constituents and community board. They have a very hard time getting into school. Um they have like a lot of barriers to them to get into school. And if we truly want, and if the community, we, or have an easier pathway to be a part of the job school. So, I'm not, I, I'm not gonna say against that, or I think, but I know that's something that my community, that I have spoken to, have like, really, than like, we want to get into school, we want to be able to teach the kids, we want to share our resources, but it's so hard to get into.
Community partnership one?
Yeah.
It's um, it looks like it was a template for the final, not this. Last one that was updated was the twenty eighteen. So it is due for review. Um and right now, it doesn't have any updated policy, so it's not working. So, um teaching and development, I think it should just follow the.
So. Can anyone speak to what that policy is? Like, does anyone have knowledge about how community partners get into this school?
We have a community, I'm just J L, the manager's all about community partners.
Okay.
Generally, we'll be questioning that.
Okay, so they will be able to give you more information on how that is.
We should not follow.
Okay. And if we remind you, I run.
Something I want to point out too, that sometimes, so the policies are not the whole story. One thing I've noticed, Scott, we have a lot of policies. We don't necessarily have a lot of regulations, we don't accompany the policies. And so maybe, maybe, because I, I, but I came back to some of those, I had said, then, you know, met a lot of community partners, and I could sit down and talk with them, explain the process. So some of them, and I get them, I get the legitimate feeling that how they feel, but some of it is also, they don't really like the process. And so, you know, and I'm, so I'm a community person at heart, so I'm always torn, right? Because you have to also have a process. So maybe the issue is, the process, so maybe, maybe taking a look at this policy you guys gave for, it may not be that the policy is the issue, it may be that maybe we took, I don't know, I have to see additional regulations, if they exist, and forgive me, Scott and Jen, but I have to see them. So if there are no regulations for this policy, maybe what we need to do, if you guys, is to think about how do we develop regulations that are, you know, twenty-first century regulations? When we take them from the ground out, I think about how they can update, how they can streamline, how they can. There is a, to Scott's point, J L does oversee, like there is policies, we don't have any technical.
Who, so, so for regulations?
There are, I understand that I stay at the seat.
For regulations, is, am I, do, am I saying this right? Is regulations typically written by the administration? Or is that commonly, right?
It's very nice, you shouldn't go, what happens when you write regulations, you write them? You don't have to approve them, not to approve the policy, the regulations.
Right.
It's good for you to know that, right? So, that's something that is important, whereas you do that, when you, when you guys say, well, this is something that we need to do. Well, you got a policy, you could work with it, you could, you know, oversee that policy, and think about how to be up there, and you wish you could share it with me, because it's a good, it's a good thing. And that's good too, because it also increases community participation, to get some feedback, and to, it's like. Not trying to create more work for myself, but you know. Not trying to create more work for myself, I do want, and that seems like the best, that seems like happening, I have to wait for any of these. If you say, I think the question, when here's a policy, where are the regulations attached to it? That are attached, you have no regulation, yes, the question, is it a question about policy, or is it a question of you don't have regulations, so that's a piece to adopt.
But I think that piece should be spelled out, which is the regulations piece, and I don't know if that should be spelled out in like the policy. Yeah, and I don't know if it should be like spelled out though, in like the policy development process and then like put in that. You know, that the regulations just to be established by the superintendent and reviewed by the school board, you know, for advising, I don't know. But I love to try to get everything spelled out and don't leave it in gray areas anywhere.
Regulations might be a little different because we oversee, we get broader, and they are the ones who are supposed to be more.
Right, right.
A little more focused, so like regulations is more, they know how to implement this. We just kind of say, we want this general direction, and regulations say, okay, and we should, we could ask if we can help and like be involved in that in any way. But having it go through the school board might be.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not necessar- so, I'm not necessarily saying, um, that the school board like approved the regulations. But a process where the school board will be able to sort of, you know, review the regulations as it pertains to be connected to the policy. And when I say review, that doesn't get like, right, right, right.
Ask us like how we're going to come up with it.
Right.
How we're going to become a community partner, and say, okay.
But, but to your point, I think it needs to be spelled out that, you know, the school board is not to, you know, dictate regulations. Because I think when it does return to local control, there does need to be in fact a separation, you know? And I'm thinking long-term, that people think that, you know, policy establishing regulations, that didn't seem correct. And that's why I'd ask the question, I just wanna make sure there's clarity and there's a separation between administration authority and school board authority.
We, we, we develop the regulations and then of course we share processes, we, we share them with people, any of this is what came up with that. But that's something the district does, and the newer policy, I don't know, but I happen to be one of the ones that I wrote comments since I've been back in the ones. There's always a line in there that says regulations, so there's some sense in there.
Right, right.
So if you guys say that regulations will be developed by the superintendent or his or her agency or something, so that's actually in the new one. So, it's in the actual policy that we're going to use, so.
I do think there's value though, just like we're trying to make it easier for the community to be able to define our policies. That the regulations also be easy to find, because like, we sometimes, I don't sometimes know where the regulations are. And maybe some of these do have them, we just don't know where, where they are.
Yeah.
And then also language, so the, the student code of conduct, well, we did the student code of conduct policy last year, but we don't have a student code of conduct policy. I said, no, we don't have a policy that has a clear ground board, now we do, well, we didn't, but what we have was a student code of conduct. Those kind of are the regulations, that's how, that's how you actually carry out a policy. But we never had the actual formal policy. So, our student code of conduct, it's a, their regulations on how we interpret the policy, what we think or what to do in that district. All policies, just that in that case, in fact, it's a matter of, the regulations first, so.
Right, so, so, for example, too, Heidi, we have, um, it's called the school board code of conduct. And I, it, it references in there that there ought to be regulations. So, is those regulations that, are those regulations established by the administration or?
When you know, uh, students that's school board.
Right.
They don't have governance over school board, we have governance over school board.
Right, and, and I think, I think then there may have to be a development of a separate process on regulations. Cause I don't want people to be like, okay, you know, the regulations are established by the superintendent, but then the superintendent, you know, by saying that the superintendent has authority over the regulations. For the code of conduct as well. I, I don't wanna make a lot of work and stuff, but I, I just wanna make sure everything is so clear and concise, and there's not any confusion with, you know, policies and regulations. The process of it.
Yeah, well, definitely, yeah, you should on this, they actually have, um, next to every policy, they have the office. That is in charge of it, and so the ones that we, as like our school board bylaws, um. The school board superintendent relations, uh, school board code of conduct, those are all under.
Ah, okay.
It's a school board, so those are the ones that we should have governance over.
I, I know exactly what, I know exactly what it is, that makes a lot of sense.
So that, that was also really helpful to even see like who, in, yeah, cause it's not just PPSD, it says that who in PPSD should be in charge of this particular, um, policy.
Would it be so much work as we work through the different policies, could we add the regulations to this spreadsheet that you guys put together? Or link the, the, the red, just so like, yeah, I don't know, cause this, this is great, this, this spreadsheet, but I think that would be helpful to have too.
The column is there already, it's just.
Oh, it is?
It's just, sorry, it's not much of a, yeah.
That's why I'm wondering if there are regulations in these policies. We, I mean, we can ask whoever the leader is of that, of the policy to indicate there is one.
And we can do it as we work through each policy, I'm not saying go back and do it all now, but I think it could be helpful, um, at least for me.
I know you won't be overseeing like the regulations and, well, who makes the regulations, but something that I think, I think would be great. I think standardizing things is helpful, and so I know if, if there's a template for a policy.
Yep.
Maybe there should be a template of the regulations, like what should be placed when someone's creating regulations.
Would that be something that, who recreate, definitely, or would the district create, that you guys create?
But would, would that be a policy with the regulations, would be a policy?
No, but I think right now we're, we're doing it differently, so like regulations aren't. Everyone's still doing, I mean, you have a great template, I mean, like, like the template you have the regulations.
Right, and I think that, Scott, I thought you put one together based on what I had done, I think you put a template together.
But I was the first one to do it Monday, so.
Okay. Yeah, he did, he actually created one based on what I had done, I remember that, so it does exist, we just think about.
Is it the equity lens that you've shared?
No, no, that's different. No, she's talking about, um, I think she's talking about race and equity regulations, go draft, and that, that. I'll link it in there, uh, I mean, I think I've said it to you that before, but, but Scott did create, cause I remember he created several templates. So we could standardize, not only the regulations, but also policies that are kind of about the same, so I think we start.
Who's that, who's that, who else? Um, the strategic direction, also when I speak development, to build a level of stakeholder, given them more autonomy and share decision-making. Um, I was interested in that policy and I noticed that it looked also in a high title, I think it had a high next to it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if you wanna talk about that.
Are we talking about the policies right now? I'm sorry, it's me.
Yeah, but it, it's, so we kind of skipped over five point oh, so we're like on six point oh right now, so. It's, so the five that you picked, kind of why did you pick them, and like why did you want, and what do you feel should be reviewed in this policy? Um, so we can have that discussion, so we can finalize the list of five that we want to hire, or it's like, I'm excited.
I think I'm missing, I'm gonna be missing, so you guys already agreed to like five.
No, no, this was, we were, we were all supposed to pick five on our own, and then present them today, to why we wanted these five. And then we're gonna finalize which five we're gonna pick now.
Ah, I, I do, I wanna, I'm not here yet, but I do wanna pick at least two, well, I think one. I wanna pick one, but I'll finish and I'll get to it.
Oh, no, do you?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, well, I mean, well, I, I think the one that I.
I'm, I'm, we missed it, I missed it.
We missed it, we didn't have one last one.
Oh, you didn't have?
Did you have a thought though?
No, there was a lot. I'm so confused, I'm not gonna lie, like, I'm so.
This was the, so this was the same agenda from last year.
Okay. And I know you guys had scheduled something, I was like, I can't come, so I'm like, I'm a little, not gonna lie, I'm a little off of sorts.
This was the, we were supposed to have prepared for that meeting.
Got you.
And then, right, just had.
I'm like, I don't need to.
I'm a little confused, I'm like, I'm gonna have given my input, I didn't.
No, no, you're fine, you're, you're fine.
Um, the other one, the student discipline policy, when I click on that link, it brings me to nothing, it says four oh four, like error. So I'm not sure where that one went, but I know one of the things that PSU kind of pushed, um. Last year was like restorative practices, and I'm interested to know if the student discipline policy has anything with restorative practices embedded in it. I know that's like a big thing the students wanted to see in the district, um, I also support restorative practices personally, so. That's one that I feel helps to dismantle the school prison type mind, and it's something we should really look at and possibly elevate and think about. Um, Heidi, I agree with you with the high, hybrid board, like we need to kind of look at the policies that they appointed. And like, is there gonna be a difference with elected members and appointed members, or, you know, it needs, I think it should be the same, either take the one that pointed out. And just look, you know, school board members in general, um, but I think those are the ones that I would kind of think about.
Yeah, um, so I have the community partner policies, strategic, strategic direction for the school design, I mean, student discipline policy. And then the school board bylaws. Do you have any, what you look at?
Um, so no, I didn't do the research on it yet, just to be completely transparent, but the, yeah, the, the two that, that come up for me. That I hear from folks most, actually, that are most frequently coming up are, you all have a policy around how much. Like, I think it's probably helping all this, like around like student physical activity is like something that comes up a ton with community play. So I'd love to like look into that and make sure we have some updated, um, policy around that. I think similarly for like creative time and like the arts, I see a fine arts policy, but I don't kind of know that, so, but I think. Yeah, but I think just like that enrichment is really important, school meals, um, and like the quality of school meals and like what the standards are. Um, are key, those are like the three that I hear the most on community, kind of bubbling up on top of what you said, like, um, community partners. I think there's two additional that we need to look at is just a little like return control, the superintendent evaluation.
Yeah.
Process, um, the policy, just to normalize ourselves with that, and as well as the TAP policy. And how that relates to if at all, like the new, the transitional plan that we're gonna be creating, um, so.
The ones that I had picked, um, and I'll tell you a little bit about why, so the core beliefs and commitment policy. That hasn't been updated since two thousand and eight, and the reason that I picked our, the plan number one is that we won't be listening to you. And so that would be a really easy one for us to update and, um, get information on. And that's kind of our framework as well, is that we're supposed to be creating sort of, not policies for core beliefs and commitment. Um, so that was one of the ones that I suggested we look on, under revise. Um, that could also be something that we do continuously while we're doing our listening sessions, so it doesn't have to be one of the five that we picked today. Um, I think it would just be something that we look on. And the second one, which I think that we need to work on, and it has to be one of our five, is the bylaws. Uh, just because it's not to say like what are, are appointed and elected, but it just says, it has no mention of elected right now. And so all it says is like, could, what, the, what the school board is, is appointed, married, by, and, um, and we're not that anymore. So we need to make sure our bylaws say, like, and that should be a top priority that we change, is our bylaws, um, make sure that has that language. And we don't have to touch the other parts of it, um, if we don't want to, which is specifically just the language of adding elected. Um, and that should be pretty easy, there are some that we can do.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say with the, um, this one, cause I'm talking to you, shut up this, with the bylaws, um. So, right now with the bylaws, and, and I've actually within the past twenty four, twenty-five hours have been looking at it. But if you look at the bylaws, it talks about the general powers of the school, the school committee. It's like with that, section three, article three, the last bullet says to appoint and remove all school department employees and fix their salaries within, uh, limits. Established by the city council for the school department, so according to state law, this is actually not even, um, applicable anymore. Or power of the school board, um, to appoint, you know, any sort of staff or, you know, that the superintendent recommends. But we do in fact have authority to remove all school department employees according to state law. So, one of the things that, um, I would love to be tasked with is working with legal on the entire document. And coming back to the policy committee, if you need this, you know, issue or have a special meeting, and I can actually work with you on this too. Um, but I could work with you on this too, but actually looking at this entire document and making sure that it sort of aligns with state law. And the charter, also, the, the state law talks about the, um, collective bargaining agreement. And it says when the school board is in fact, you know, fully appointed and not elected, and they have that authority. When the school board is elected and not appointed, the school can really have that authority. Um, and I think that that's something that needs to be discussed, I know, um, according to the charter, it gives the net some kind of authority as it pertains to like some pieces of the budget. So I think really getting the legal lens on that, and I have it for passing, cause I'm talking to Sarah all the time, um, I think would definitely be beneficial. Um, in how that process is, but also, I don't know if that's something that should be issued in the bylaws, you know, I know Boston does it. From when I was looking at this, or that should be a separate policy underneath the school board's scope, that sort of issues of a process. And commonly, board members don't sit in our negotiations, we literally have like a legal counsel that does that. Plus, the superintendent leads that, you know, process, and they're just tasked with, you know, um, the board is tasked with the final approval. If that's rested and as well, who is fully appointed with the man, but sort of having a process that, you know, is in place would be beneficial. That could be the return to local control, so.
Yeah, I'm, uh, definitely down to, I guess, if we can do, I think I'll be, uh, setting this on the top, and I'm not going to change it. Could be one of the easiest things that we change, um, we don't really, maybe, maybe B S D staff will do it as well, so.
No, no.
As long as we get this done, ready to Sarah and I think, um, so I'd be excited, maybe, you can press on, maybe my next one to show them.
I, I think so, I, I think we can, I think we definitely can absolutely. Yes.
Uh, all right, so that was, so bylaws, um, my third one was the school board policy review, um, just that we haven't. That was high on the list as well, priorities, um, we haven't reviewed that in the last since two thousand and eight, when we have the template of twenty twenty four. So I'm like, that's one we can get, get done easy, it's already written, so it should be one of our flags, we can get this out of the way. Um, so it's like, and it's a, it's a high priority, um, so we should, that should be one of them, that's why I said one of the five. Um, and then my fourth one is student rights and responsibilities, that last time it was reviewed in two thousand and five. Um, and I know, um, Dr. O'Neil's saying, we just did the code of conduct, that was revised in twenty twenty four, so I was wondering if.
Wasn't revised.
It was me.
Oh, sorry.
Policy was a dollar, can't be proved, the school board, the student code of conduct is the one we need. So, we, when we call both of them policies, I just want to say that as a matter of fact. So this, when we call the student code of conduct policy, the regulations for the policy that you just newly wrote and approved. It's like.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm gonna just.
So create it, cause it was created last year. So I wanna make sure that our students' rights and responsibilities are reflecting what was created in twenty twenty four. Since this wasn't, our students' rights and responsibilities hasn't been revised since two thousand and five.
Right.
Uh, really, so it's like. And, and it is, it does have a high priority listed, it is listed as high priority, but I think this would be one of a good, one of the good five for us. Cause now we're also going to community, like community listening sessions, so also listening to students and including what they want. And we have all that research from the code of conduct policy that was just created, that we can make sure that it's matching. And I think that's one of our priorities, is one of our main objectives, is making sure that our school board can pass students, student outcomes. And like, this is one of, this is part of student outcomes, so I was saying, this is one of my five. And the last one, I added in here, just cause there's been a lot of, um, talk about this, and it was revised last year. Um, but it's the school closing consolidation policy, uh, we don't, it doesn't have to be one of our five right now that we look at. But I just wanted to bring it up because we've had a lot of community conversation about it now, and I know it was reviewed last year. Um, but maybe with the new comments that we've been getting and the new situations we were put in, um. Maybe getting and looking at it through a new lens and figuring out if we have something to add, we might not have something to add to it. Um, but that was just one of my suggestions for the five, so it doesn't have to be the, the first five that we look at, but wanted to bring it up there.
I think that's definitely important, and I need to look at our notes from last year, but I remember there being like, um. There may need to be another policy that comes prior to the decision of a school being closed. Because I, if I remember correctly, that policy still very much acted decision with me.
Yep.
And there wasn't a sort of like. And there wasn't a sort of like policy stating, well, how does that decision even come into fruition?
Yep.
And so I remember I was talking about, well, that's something that needs to probably be created too, so yeah.
That was exactly why, cause I looked it up, I looked it up and they, they say like it says like initial, a note, initial notification within thirty days of a recommendation to initiate the school board's closure. So at that point, there was already a recommendation to close. There's nothing talking about what happens before that process, highly involving community or not involving learning or talking to people about this, cause that's kind of where we get the feedback is no one knows when the school is going to close until it closes. Um so figuring out the policy around that. Uh and that's something that we'll work a lot with P P S D, because you guys might be working on this already or figuring it out. Um have something in place that's just not in our policy, or something that I haven't seen, um so maybe working with you guys to figure out how that looks. Yeah, that was just the five that I had. I don't know if you guys had any input, or if you guys had any ones that you guys wanted to work on, or anything that we should be working on, um any ones that you heard that we suggested, bringing them out. Can, can, can you open them up? Yep, so it's the core beliefs and commitments, uh school board bylaws, the school board policy review policy, student rights and responsibilities, school closing, fine arts, school meals, community partners policy, um the strategic direction, which is school based, um autonomy, student discipline policy, um superintendent evaluations, and the TAP policy. So right now, we're going to decide on whichever five that we think we should be focusing on, our first five.
And I would say with the um, what is it, the district administration, I think that this is something that can begin to be reviewed in like January or February. If, you know, we're thinking that this week will come back in twenty two, twenty six, but you know, focusing a lot of our time on, you know, we, we don't know what the process will be, but you know, updating the superintendent recruitment, superintendent responsibility, superintendent contract, superintendent evaluation, um like updating those policies directly to the superintendent um would be good, because those is all outdated, oh my god. So that would be good to get all of those updated um as well, but not now, that's nothing to talk about right now.
I think, I think there's one about student policy.
I think it's something on the agenda for selection of prior, well, is this the time to talk about?
So if, if you wanna, if you wanna put your two, your two, that's what we're talking about right now, is uh selection. Yep, so if you wanna put your two.
Oh, okay, I, I wanna, I wanna have some more conversations with the, with the district on this. As it pertains to um school visits, the school board visitation. I don't know if this should be something that should just be sort of dedicated to the school board, you know, and I, I know Dr. He and you then and Scott, you've both been in this for a very long time. I don't know if there's a, a general policy that is in place on a school level, or I don't think there's one district wide as it pertains to like community partners visiting schools. But I'm saying like if there's an overall district, and I don't think there was, or was it, is it a overall district policy?
There's one on this, uh especially as a draft.
Okay.
So there, there is.
And I think if there is, so that one's getting drafted, I think what we can do is we can sort of add language in there that speaks to when board members visit schools.
So they do have language in here that talks about specifically the school board members, elected officials, um like employees, so they have it kind of definitions of public officials, elected, considered, unemployed, out of state. Um you know, the purpose and scope of this, so those are, they were working on.
Oh, good, okay, can you send that to me? Mm-hmm, okay. Um and I, cause I think it would be good to just incorporate all in one policy and not have a separate policy. But I just want to make sure there's clear criteria, because you know for some years now, there's always been, you know, whether board members should or shouldn't be in school, I just want to make sure there's a clear process there. You know, for when board members do go, um you know, we have a policy that's in place, and then um.
Yeah, it's got to be the rented official school visit policy, so it's.
Can you share? I don't even know shit, I'm like.
Wait, I don't know if I have the.
Share, share.
Cause this is on their, their tablet.
I thought you were on it earlier.
That's right.
Um I didn't get shared. But it's, it's not a policy yet, so.
It's being drafted, right, right. But that's, that's the good, that's good, that's actually perfect. I'm gonna use the word. Oh, thank you. That's perfect, okay. That, that's really all that I wanted um to, 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 you know, begin to speak about, cause there's been a lot of confusion around that. Um that, and then also, um what is it, I, I actually just had a meeting with the city council uh president and her chief of staff. And um, you know, one of the things that they're trying to align on as well as making sure that the charter aligns with the bylaws also. So there's gonna be a lot of work of, you know, balling around that. And um in order to sort of issue out a lot of our work, I want you to get the work posted with what the policy chair is, but hey, you know, this is what we're thinking, this and that. So you know, we can actually get it done, but it's real, you know, it's part time for a little food time for me, I guess. I have a part time for everybody, so I want to just make sure that then after, you'll be able to sort of look at some of the drafts and stuff as well over the end, I've given the conversations, but those is literally the two things in that you already, you're already on it as it pertains to the policy uh development process of how each policy is developed, so you know. That, that's the little I, that's what I came there for. The whole screen, and then to just say, you know, with the district administration stuff, I don't think that this is the necessary time to actually dig deep into it, but I do think that, you know, come next year, as we are getting closer, we went through the majority of our training with the council of great things in schools. I think then that's the time for us to begin to draft and look at all of the district administration policies. And you know, review and devise those according to, you know, national best practices. Um but yeah, I, I think, yeah, that's all I can, that's it, that's what I can just say, so that's all it.
Yeah, no, and, and the school visit policy.
What does it really, what does it really?
So it's, it's pretty um, it's pretty, I just broad, um you just, you talk about like visits during instructional hours. Like how, how are you, how do you go about asking to visit a school, um visitor conduct? It talks a lot about, you know, you can distribute campaign materials, you can't campaign inside a school, and then after school activities events. And then the after school activities, everyone, but this is mostly about public officials, so it's not just school visits, specifically with public officials who visits. Um and so it's also like all public officials are encouraged to attend, so it doesn't really say anything about the process and about some after school events. Um but it's uh, once you've reviewed it.
That's perfect, okay.
I don't want to be annoying, but I, I know that this ain't, what, what they. Um kind of passed, like passed the bill about um cell phone use in schools, and then our expected public, we should make policies. I don't know if the school board should look at, put in a policy about.
I had a meeting to talk to you, I had a meeting to talk to you about that.
I haven't passed yet, but.
Brett Kizlik actually called me about that, and she said it's gonna be approved and the school board probably should actually get ahead of it. Um and you know, sort of, you know, establish some kind of policy, allow the superintendent to establish regulations around it, so. I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 thank you.
All right, so that's all. So it kind of sounds like um the two that I keep hearing people repeating is the bylaws and the policy review. Um so those are two out of five. Are there any ones that, I mean, that you guys feel strongly that we should review at this time? For the first five that we review?
I would, well, the one that I suggested, I'm willing to just on the anytime you are researched, I don't feel I feel very passionate about them, but I don't, you know, it's the most critical for where we are, so you know.
Yeah.
Well, let me put to, is there like, is there like, does, does the administration have to get to specific policies or things that they probably are like, listen, maybe this will have updated or revised, or pretty much that's it. Okay, okay.
So it's uh yeah, the ones around the arts, meals, and those, they were like, I just, I think they were super important. I don't like the, um, which is in school, like, like, what about art?
Really quick.
You got related with me when you were sharing about the student rights policy, cause I feel like that one will affect every policy. I think we have the students' rights solidified, that we want to make sure our true across our district. I'm thinking the top five should be ones that will affect like all the other policies coming after, and so I even looked through, there's multiple policies that touch upon student rights that we have probably condensed, like you were saying. Um, I guess that's, I think, uh student policy, there's like transgender, there's, there's multiple separate policies, but all kind of all of the issues that are raised. So that to me was like, oh, I think that, that would be a good one in my mind, because it would affect other, other policies afterwards.
But I would not advocate, I hear you, so I'm gonna, now I'm gonna have to. I would not advocate condensing transgender policy, pregnant, or baby violence. I'm not gonna consolidate that. Uh because I follow that media, I'm happy to share that with you, they should be very, very separate, very specific, just to protect those students. Um the student rights and responsibilities, a lot of students only want to learn the course. I'm actually, I'm actually sharing that with you, they don't know, because I think it'd be good to, I, I agree with you, I think it'd be good to revisit that. Maybe in our committee, in our internal committee, we can talk about that, and then figure out what we're working together and please students. First of all, review it, say, hey, this is what it says, what are your thoughts, and then what is the review? But I believe the pregnancy, baby violence, and the transgender, so is it so specific around other laws? Particularly, um are you tied in the army, kind of six, so. Little sense.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh isn't, doesn't the uh student bill of rights, isn't that, like, don't they give students like their suspended ability to go on a killing or something like that? Yeah, so that, that's good, and I did not know that, even though I probably lost every time I was in school. And like, no, and then for the TAP, can the district correct me? Was that policy, that, was that policy put in by like the commissioner? Look, it has like the actual TAP plans, I, I don't know if that's like was mandated by the commissioner that that goes into there, and if so, I don't know if that's probably something. Yeah. I don't.
I think for us to do the TAP policy, that would just be like creating a whole turnaround action there? Do you want to create the policy?
Cause I guess the question I would have, I'm, I'm hearing definitely, I guess I'm wondering like as we are uh creating a new collaborative transition plan between the city, pride, the district, the school board. Um what, where is, what happens with the TAP? I know that's not just a policy question, you know what I mean? Like, I think we're gonna have to be able to like know what the answer to that is, like is it like the new, is it the transition plan that like, that replaces that, or is there like I, I just don't, actually just don't know what we are gonna do with once.
Is there a way where we're able to speak to Drew, and this can probably be like the transparency thing, and see if, you know, once the development process begins to take place, they provide an update to the, you know, school committee on what that process is gonna look like, allow the policy committee to, you know, revise on it. And then when it's actually officially adopted, it can just go into sort of, you know, effecting up, you know, policy manual.
When you say it would be.
Uh the it is like the, the plan, yeah, the take back plan, I don't know if that's it or.
Yeah, I guess I have, I guess the, yeah, I think so, I guess the question is, is like, is that a policy? Like, I just don't even know, it's a strategic, it's a plan, it's a strategic plan, kind of.
So does it belong there?
I don't even, I don't even know, I'm just, it feels a little out of place, I understand why it's there, but I'm just, I just not, I'm not sure.
It's not really a policy, yeah. Is there a reason this one was given a policy?
What is that?
The TAP, the TAP plan? Uh because like when you look on it, it doesn't do a policy, it just brings you to the turn actually.
Yeah, maybe it is, yeah.
Cause I also, I guess I wonder, and I, I mean, I guess it's yet to be seen, because like we're doing community listening sessions, you know, there's gonna be a transition plan. Um maybe, I guess part of it could be is like what from the TAP must be retained upon local control, maybe that's a way to think about it too.
I think one, one policy that like help us figure out like this, is so there's a school district goals and objectives policy. And I think if we review that, that policy and then can inform how to take that plan and like how that, how that's gonna get, cause that hasn't been updated since two thousand and three.
Yeah, maybe that's the one, I mean, I actually want the one that I focus on is like, well, it's our district goals and objectives, and that can then inform.
We're gonna need to know that because of the, the process. So that will, yeah.
So we can change the top one to, to that one.
Yep.
That makes a lot of sense, it does. Since two thousand and three.
I mean, what we put right from our year. So the school board bylaws, the school board, oh, core beliefs and commitments. Um and that's the core beliefs and commitments, so we're good straight.
That's a very important policy.
I think we should, that's everything, cause that's where, like, that's really important. That's a really important. This, do we agree that should be created there? So. So our five is the core beliefs, commitments, the bylaws, the policy review policy, um student rights, responsibilities, and then the district goals and objectives. I'm great. And you got five and start with.
So question, so all of these, so at the next meeting, you guys meet. You're, I'm sorry, um, what was I gonna say? Will you just like review all of them that night, or are you thinking like, you know?
So that's our, our next steps.
I'm not coming back to pause.
No, you got it, you got it, no, you're ahead of me, you're good. Um so after we determine which five, I think next steps that we're gonna talk about is our expectations for our review.
Okay, okay.
And what we want to bring to our next meeting, um to figure out like, is there anyone who wants to take responsibility for a certain policy and reviewing and working on it. Um I already spoke about um the bylaws, I can, I can take that on another, but Sarah, I'm figuring out the bylaws. Um are there, are there core beliefs, review, student rights, and the district goals, are there any ones that you guys feel strong, wanting to believe on?
I'm sorry. No, I was gonna say.
Uh I think after this, we can break on it, okay, we will.
I think that's gonna be two of those. I like that. I like the core beliefs. Um so I get, yeah, do those two.
I will, I don't think it's added in there. But I'm gonna uh take on the visitation.
Um are, are they taking some or just up reading?
Um I think we should, we'll take the, like, we could take the lead on probably like the school board member, and then we can um talk to them on the district side of, because we have on here like the teams that are working on it. Um and then we can reach out to that office or see if there's anyone that you guys feel we should be reaching out to, working with on that um on the district side. That would, we have like, we can also be there on. Um so you said you, you want a core belief, right?
No.
You want a core belief, yeah.
Do you want, do you want me to, um, I'm, I'm sorry, do you want me to take on the one with the policy?
The policy review policy.
I can still, I can work with you on that also.
To the chief of the. Every time you say, every time you say last. Yeah, one of that, yeah.
Um uh is there any, one last thing, is there any policies as it pertains, so I'm not gonna do it, we'll talk to you. No, we'll wait, I talked to you offline, I know. Because it, it deals with like state law and stuff, but we'll talk offline.
And so when we go um offline, we'll reach out, um after we, we can look at the, the list, and we'll reach out to
Can you do a favor, Heidi, can you um like send all of, you know, to all of us, um like if you just agree to?
Yep, yep.
Cause I wouldn't be like, I forget.
I found the, I found the student discipline policy, also, I'll link it in there, please, thank you.
Uh it must have got this.
Yeah. Well, it's all into the policies, it's there, but the English version is not there.
I don't have the English version dropped, so I'm gonna link it in here and then talk to, this is a bit, I think that's a bit.
Wait, Dr. Only. Dr. Only, do you know I searched that up yesterday, um I literally searched that up yesterday and I had to put it through like an AI platform. Legitimately, I'm dead serious, I had to check, translate this from Spanish to English. I'm running into it because I was looking at something, so.
I was actually gonna do that. We now put once um Brazil comes in, that's.
Should she go to?
Can I ask two, two questions? Well, one request, one question. So one question would be um Dr. Only, I feel like, I forget if any of us, it's like the equity, um like special, special equity? Yeah, and you know how there's like that, like the equity funds tool, and I know it's for decision making? I wonder like, does that also relate to a policy, like do we look at policies through?
Do you wanna make me happy?
Yes, I do. Because like that's the thing that I feel like is kind of like key to doing all this is like. Can we, I don't know if that relates to the framework kind of situation.
It's like, it's an equity decision making tool, like people use in government, state offices, business, education. Healthcare, like it can be used for any team in any organization, high level, down ground, and so we can. And and that's the one we're using, that we adopted is the one that Brian actually. So we, we looked at a bunch of them across the country, including Boston, we landed on that because. That's the draft that Brian, that's the, of their Brian pilot, so he's not used to. So take a look at it and then you could also have different questions if those questions don't. Because it's really, it's just a set of questions that you have to look at as you're making decisions, that's really what it looks like. So I would suggest maybe adopting that one for now, and then as you use it, you'll figure out. Whether it works for you or doesn't work for you.
Yeah, because I, I wonder, and I don't know if this is too formal, but I, I might wanna suggest that. Maybe somewhere in here that like that's part of our, our framework, maybe is like using that tool. To look at policy or revising policy, do you know what I mean? So that was the, that was the question slash request, now a request request. Because I think maybe from meetings going forward, I don't know how it works for like not the formal meetings, but like. We could use some type of projector or have pronounced of what we're gonna, because I, it's just such a text heavy conversation. Um and I think even for folks listening or for people coming in or stuff. It's hard to have conversations about policy without having stuff like tangibly in hand.
Would you guys send it to me?
Yeah.
I have no problem.
Yeah, yeah.
I just have to send to you, that's why you guys.
Yeah, oh no, I know, I know it's not on you, it's, it's us thing.
Whatever you guys send over.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's a team us thing, I think just us, us making sure that we know what we're gonna be looking at to have it printed, because it does, it's hard to like.
And then you're gonna go weird being on like all the language.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, am I able to speak to the space, the location? I'm not there, this place being operated, this place being operated.
I can see the process.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a pro, there's something in process, so you know, we can maybe.
Please, please relax.
So if, you know, there'll be like TVs and stuff, so it'll be a bit more accessible for the uh.
So we can like put the policy on the projector and stuff like that, yeah.
At the meantime, we don't always use that.
Oh, it's TV, okay.
Yeah, especially in my cable, as long as you have a computer and you have your, your documents when you come in, you can project it right there.
That would be really cool, yeah, just so we can all like just get grounding on like what we're looking at and. For us as coordinators, we, we have the privilege of seeing stuff in advance, like to see in advance. Um but like for people who are just coming in to the meetings, they might, it was, I think they need kind of their laws right now, like you're talking about, you know what I mean?
And I would say, I think, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but the pro, what's the typical process for like the policy coordinator? Would the polit, would like the committee go to the policy coordinator and say, hey, this is one of the specific policies? This is what I'm looking at, would you go and speak to the person from the administration or you?
I think that what we kind of set up that is new is whatever policy you want to review, the policy coordinator. They'll meet internally with the policy committee, that meets like every two weeks. And then that policy committee has all of us on it, and we can say, this really lives, we are in these two departments, and I'll schedule a meeting.
Okay.
That's the last one. So you'll bring these five to the new coordinator?
Yes, so the coordinator starts one day, that'd be part of the transition plan. Which will, then they're in our first, our first meeting, we'll pitch this, and these are the policies that she's gonna task with. And then we'll create who she needs to work with internally here to bring back to you.
Yeah, and what's our, thank you for that, what's our whole meantime? Is it like coordinators, are we expected to mostly like review the policy, like we know from the policy and then like bring that? To the next meeting or is it to coordinate with the policy coordinator in advance?
Um yeah, but what I was thinking, correct me if I'm wrong, was that we review, we can come up with questions, ideas, or things we want to. And then we present that to you guys, also working with you guys, um and then. You guys use that information, give us feedback, and then we would be, I'll be working with them on creating of a draft to represent.
It would be your first read, second read, and adoption.
So they would drop that first and then read it.
Review, um you still can change whatever the language is and stuff, and then take it to the full board for first read, for second read. And then you can keep making changes in the meantime until we're done to. That's the way, that's the way, but the purpose of this, this, the purpose of this team is so that when it goes to the full board, it passes. All right, because that's why I said look at it and take that and then change it, so when we break it to them, we're pretty confident. They're gonna just like, yeah, they're gonna, they're not meeting the, the way you want it to be, so they're not pleased, but so. They're gonna rely on all of you, that you can look at it and you edit it. And then, I mean, they'll look at it, but they're gonna be relying on.
Like the contracts, like, or like finance, like we're trusting that you all, you know, you might review it, but it's like you guys talk about it. So um forgive me, but so, so then our task would be to review and bring the feedback ideas that we give back to this group. Not that we're meeting with the district in between now and then, I just need to.
I mean, you can't, I mean, like, like for example, if we're working on, I'm gonna use the student physical box, let's say that, that Susan, that we were working on that. And let's say I'm part of it, because if people of us are working on that, and we let you know, hey, this is the time we're working. If you're able to come, it would be great for you to come in person, but if you can't come in person, I think what Heidi said was the perfect thing, which is just send a tweet like. What are your thoughts, you know, um send us an email, I guess, I mean, we should, maybe when she comes on board, she can create some kind of, help capture. Yeah, so you could put your thoughts in there, things that you're passionate about, things you're concerned about, things you're more flattered about. Which helps us as we're working on it to have your feedback, so then when we come back here for the whole, the next month. You can actually see your feedback when you're giving the draft for sure. I mean, that makes sense, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, it's just making me think about, maybe we need to create like some type of workflow. Because I, I think even when I was in the policy committee last year, I was often just like, how to get feedback, like where does it go? Like get in some like the different internal groups. Um I just think, and I get, I don't know if it's part of this thing or some other thing, that's just like.
Well, if you look at the workflow, there's a workflow tag, just look at the spreadsheet, you don't need to do it now, but look at the workflow, you can do the.
Okay.
Visual and also some language in there, but that's easy, because I need, I'm, I need to see, I don't know, science is everywhere, I need to see tables, charts, and graphs. So if that's not clear, if you wanna make it clearer, so that it's not a lot of words that people can kind of see, it hears how things work. Take a look at that and see if that's, if it's not, let me know, I create that, I can always throw it out, scratch and scratch, or. Uh add something in there, so that you don't have to look at a bunch of words, you can just look at this.
No, that means.
Visual and then.
And that has like the word, like.
Who's the policy committee?
Oh, there it is.
And I'm calling us the internal, so the policy advisory council?
Yeah, that's kind of it.
That's us, the internal PPSD folks, and then the school board policy committee is holding, it's holding.
So, so, so the first, the first point, so how would that process typically go? You know, would that be something that like the coordinator works with the staff?
Exactly, exactly, so like you just picked up, Scott said you just picked up, uh, so she would get those and then she would figure out who's all on it. Or is she, like connection, and then you'd be working, send it, uh send your feedback. That's internal book could work on it, and then maybe bring it back to the group. I never stayed, it's, it's here wherever we are.
And she, she'd be the one typing it, right, and providing it like that? Makes sense.
Uh team, can we agree that when we're looking for that we are, we're not actually.
Maybe they have something to get added in there.
Because of that, it feels.
What, what, what if I'm happy, shoot, and I'm happy Dr. Only spoke to that, um because as we begin to look at the uh the bylaws. Sure, you know, one of the things that I think we need to look at is the equity advisory council. Um I do in fact point to attend the next meeting, I've always been trying to point to, I think I attended one. And I always forget about it, unfortunately, I apologize. Um but maybe adding that into a, a formal committee, um look at the school project that come, and have been worked with Dr. Only, and see how you can sort of a. Committee for the school, uh for the school board. That's one thing, and then the second thing is resolutions. Then we, you know, and I'm done after, I'm serious, I'm just, I'm gonna just walk off. Um resolutions, was me thinking about that or there's still no formal process on that?
I would love that, if resolution, like how to, because that resolution.
Right.
Well, that would be something we would have to figure out in our internal like school board. Process and policies, um that'd be something that would. I'm trying to be right, right now.
I think we do, right?
An internal school board, like there, we, you know, district policy.
These are my conclusions, resolutions.
Do we have like a, do we have like a policy that's like school board policy, not just district policy?
No, not that I know of.
So that would be something that we would need to create.
We can talk to Melissa too, because there was definitely something written last year, that was like a suggestive way.
But it was never, it was never actually put up there.
It wasn't, no, no, no.
As I just talked about, it's not that it was never passed.
Yes, you asked her.
So maybe we can allow the coordinator to conduct some research on it and probably get back to the committee on that.
I understand, I think it was a property.
Okay, maybe they could speak with Melissa.
Like we don't really have, besides like our code of conduct, we don't really have like a school board policy. We, we just maybe a district policy right, right now.
Or what do you think it should be like, be a school board policy?
I think we should have like a school board handbook, a code of conduct. What is our bylaws, what is each uh policy for each committee, and like what can they do? How do you create the committee, how do you bring up the idea of creating a committee to the president, like things like that.
I think, um, as I've been looking at it, I think Chicago has something that, if we can task the uh policy coordinator a little bit. Uh to, to conduct some research.
Just for you.
I do think there should be some kind of code of conduct, that makes sense. Well, we do have one, but you know, some kind of, right, like a little handbook or something like.
Because it could be like, how do we, how do we, what's our policy on our communications, like how do we do.
It'd be very helpful. I was gonna say, and how we're gonna talk about sustainment, like how we're gonna onboard the next step.
That would be a policy on the onboarding.
That makes sense. Are you gonna send us a little bit of that?
Alright, so for our next steps, just we can uh kind of review and close out. Um each have our five, we need to ownership of which one we're gonna be working on. Um I'd say for our next meeting, just make sure you guys read the policy that you took ownership on, have your questions, do that review. Um we'll, you're gonna speak to Brazil and let her know, and maybe, you know, we reach out to Brazil and see. She can connect those to whoever we need to be connected to, so that way when we come back, uh next policy, next meeting. We can present our feedback interview, like what we found, um and like how we're working on it, and maybe next steps, what we see for your policy. So that's, that's nice.
But if you're self-connected or as a policy committee?
I don't think we connect to any director, we tell Brazil, Brazil.
She's the policy meeting coordinator, is she?
You're correct.
Oh, I didn't realize that was her.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
I was, I was talking about a whole different.
Yeah, I know.
That was so long.
That makes sense, okay. I know, yeah, we're going.
And then we'll have our final offering.
We'll come back to July, okay? There is no, there is no.
Uh there's no, from my understanding, I was not anticipating that the policy committee comes back in July. Um but, but it is, okay, yeah, but that would, that's good because I, I do anticipate this Saturday. Um along with having the school board go through two trainings in July, I don't know how we'll do this. But there's two trainings that is required, one is the training on bylaws, which will be good as we begin to establish it, another one is the training on committees. Um so I do wanna try to get those done for inside timeline and then have them hopefully adopted or, you know, through the first read.
Saturday workshops as well.
Uh just like, well, you can see that uh I'll never do it, but most likely it's probably Saturdays. And I prefer Scott to probably, well, let's see how it goes on, uh what is this, uh this Saturday in the PD tech room, let's see how women's field. Uh and see if that's where we wanna continue to have them.
We have, um not to be the, the kid who's like, hey, Miss, you collect, collect the homework, um do we have this in July? Or can, only because we, we didn't have one in.
It's up to, it's up to the committee, it's up, if you think that you will need, yeah, absolutely, that's a lot of sense.
I just feel like we should.
But let's, so Saturday, let's.
Well, I had spoken to him.
I know, she actually.
People need vacations, yeah. For the first week of July.
Let's push it out.
Oh, yeah. Of course, you do whatever you guys want to.
It's too like that.
It's gonna have to be a Wednesday, it's gonna be whatever day you guys pick.
Well, I will, I will allow Heidi to choose.
Uh I take the bar in July, so I may not be here either, like with. Because it's the twenty ninth of the thirty, so I will probably not be here, but.
The twenty ninth of the thirty, oh, just those dates, you mean you'll be like studying.
Uh studying the whole time, like I took time off of work and I studied.
In July?
June and July, it's a, it's an intense study. So.
You can't do the last week, you know?
Nah, I have to take in that.
Well, I don't think it, I don't. I mean, you guys can meet. Well, think about it.
Yeah, let's think about it, let's think about it.
They know what you guys are gonna do. You have to make sure it holds.
Okay.
They're just all talking through.
This would be, this, that's what I was gonna say, I want you to be able to sort of, to get a chance, sort of establish your.
No, you guys can, I mean, just be talking about your feedback and like, you know, just look back and watch. So if you guys wanna meet and keep the policy going, we'll sort of give that.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Yeah, it's fun, it's also comes up with attracting tool and all that. Also, here is, you can just open up that document. And also, like, talk about, I can send my feedback to you as well, so.
Do you have another question? I just wanna show one thing, I know that last year we did start a draft, and I think it's pretty final, we put a lot of work into the policy about how to. Revise and propose policy, I forget the name of it, but that's, that's the one. And because it does take multiple reads before something actually becomes official, and I feel like that one's really going to be important to update any policies after. I just wanna make sure that that one, we have a timeline that is actually quicker, because. We won't really be able to update any of the other policies until that one's done. And so just thinking, I feel like we've put a lot of our thoughts into that, and so that might even, I think we were getting ready to just do a first read. Like that one could be ready for a first read to kind of expedite that one.
Could you guys let us know when that weekend happened and we.
We, we decide that.
Oh, so the first, the first read, the official first read was at the school board meeting. But you guys should probably.
It's in there.
It's in there. Maybe that's why you should look for it by the way, that way maybe the next time we meet, I don't know if I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna be off. First of all, it's my birthday, but I'm gonna be in and out, but what really matters is that you guys have a forum.
Yeah.
The initial meeting, think looking at that policy.
Okay.
Do you think that's how we, that's like, you know, first of all, first of all, yeah?
I think, I think due to the process, it would be approved by.
I would hope we should read it to the school board first in June, that's, I would be glad of us to read it.
It just takes time, you know, so it's like, if we wanna get the head start, like, it's gonna take like months before we can really pass.
The next, the next, the next school board, the official school board, it's coming on.
You know, first read, what we do in June? You could do a first read, yeah.
Well, so to take a look at it, it's gonna be, just anybody guys, are you as comfortable having?
I think we are, we're ready.
It's true.
On the UCF.
It's in the spreadsheet, but we could just read it on our, on the whole of the school board, maybe kind of.
But we wouldn't have a, like, we wouldn't be able to have a discussion about it, so that.
But it's just the first read, though. So you were actually, I forgot about, we were actually about to put it forward, and then everything happened.
I didn't even put suggested edits, like, it's a real document.
Yeah, I, I mean, I read it, and like, it is, it's really, it's like deep, so.
Can, can that get sent to me? I'm not, I gotta make sure I remember all this, I got like a hundred, okay, what's the name of the policy?
School board policy process.
I know, around half of it, well, it's in a car. So this is.
I read it already, like, and then some, it's in my notes on it, so.
I'll read it before, yeah.
Okay, so what I'll do is, um.
Thank you for bringing that up.
So, what I'll do is though, okay, so the first read we can have in June, cause I, I just wanna make sure that there's a consistent process, and that it does go through committee, but since you guys have put in a lot of thought, um, I have no problem with it being in June, and then the board, you know, puts out the first read and approves it, um, I just do wanna make sure that the second read goes through committees before filing.
This is the one that you and I have been working on.
Okay, so in July, we just finished the second read.
Yeah, yeah.
But we don't need in July, unless.
Well, we do it especially. Without Heidi, and she's like, so, warm up too.
Oh, yeah.
For a second read, we're gonna go to the school board of August.
And I will make sure, I'll make sure, and it won't, it won't go on the agenda if she doesn't feel comfortable with it, you know, as the chair of policy. And I'm talking about for, what is it, July, July?
Be a second read for us in July, and then it would be put on in August.
Okay, okay, let's do it, let's just do it that way.
This is a revision, just remove it from the, it's a revision.
Oh, okay.
Also, under policy development process, when we were talking about how we engage the union members, there's a broad, there's broad might need to be about, you know, you others, that can go to the regulations after we surpass. And then the regulations, we could create that process that we, or something similar to what you were sharing about, how you access or how you engage, it's how you, or is it better?
I mean, that makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Maybe, uh, it's like, we don't have to discuss it now, we're just like at our next meeting, or two, like, whoever that is, maybe we should just help them up with like a timeline for like, these policies, because I think we all have different, yeah, a different sense of what, with urgency, I know for me, the urgency is coming around potential control, twenty twenty six, it's not that all of these need to be like, I mean, I think we just have to be clear about what do we think needs to be done before. Maybe, exactly, you know, so we.
Do you have any more questions?
Do you need to? Motion, uh, motion motion. Thank you, thank you. Next time, I'm just gonna say, I, I want to propose to you. Dear, I promise. I want to buy one. I feel like I'll, and we can read this tomorrow, it's like so weird, but I feel like you, both in a second, like, both.